Don't worry about it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for being here. So I have to see the budget. First, we will be looking at the local law to override the tax cap imposed by the state of New York. And before that, we will discuss the local administration. A legal notice. Notice of public hearing on the incorporated village of Paul Park. Local law number four, and he say notice that the two parts align in the United States Constitution. Permission for the fellow of the incorporated village of Paul Park to misuse the law of the state of New York. That's not it. Public hearing will be held in the village hall from four o'clock to Paul Park from ten a.m. to eight p.m. In the evening of that day, considering that number local law, pilot, local law overrides the village board's tax cap before the state of New York. The local law should be effective on Friday, the Secretary of State gave the vote, uh, gave Paul Park to New York. Our chance that can add to the localities, local law. New York City, New York City.
Thank you. I would like to announce that the board had previously adopted an edited declaration, meaning that the proposed law has no significant impact on the environment. I would also like to read the legislative intent. It is the intent of this local board to allow the incorporated village of Paul Park to adopt a budget for fiscal year commenced in 2018 and requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by the general legislative law, section three dash C, which this year is two percent outstanding issues remain unresolved by the state of New York, including the definition of levy, mechanics placing any excess levy in reserve, and the constitutionality of the law as applied to debt, and imposition of penalties arising from mathematical errors in calculating levy and forward to the New York state law. At this time, I would ask any of the boards, if they have any comments on this? If not, I will go into our residents. Oh, sir.
I would just make a statement of protest. This village is eight before the budget in the New York State tax cap, which was fixed by twenty twelve, twenty fifteen this year. By now, it's more familiar with what the generally refers to as two percent tax cap. However, there are many factors that have been capitalized in tax cap, and these factors vary from year to year. First, the tax cap is not two percent, it's a two percent of the rate of inflation. For instance, last year, the tax cap actually was two percent. The need for that was one point one five percent. And in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year, it was zero point one two percent. Also, the past half can vary based on several factors, and it can actually vary by bill. Coming fiscal year of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the New York State tax levy cap at Paul Park is two point three three percent. Post-tax levy increase of two point two nine. And hence, the lower tax cap. As simple as it was, the second station is tax cap, the cap on the tax levy. It's not a tax cap on the tax raised, but on the overall. The distinction between the tax levy and tax raised. Tax levy is the total amount of utilities raised by taxes on all residents and businesses in the village. That takes into consideration all the sources of revenue. Tax rate is something different. The tax rate refers to the amount actually paid in tax bill facing a set value of your individual property. The tax rate increase for twenty nineteen, twenty twenties, actually, law of the tax levy increase was coming here because the bill's total set values of all taxable properties within the village. Commercial, commercial, we doing the last year, doing project, increasing constructions and building improvements within the village. Put total tax, total set value of all taxable property increase, tax rate is one point seven six, one point seven six percent below tax levy increase. Just to put some of the New York State tax cap law. The tax cap is calculated by, take that, here's a tax levy. And then multiply that by, uh, New York signs the tax base growth factor. Tax base, so tax base growth factor, essentially, tax base, um, factor signs by a percentage attributable to growth and total value of the real estate within the village to develop. Most of the other four parks basically already fully developed, there's not a lot of space for extra development. And then mostly acquired now, the tax base growth factor has been zero. Past few years, though, we've had some development, but we've lost the village, it's in the avenue. We've lost Irving, new apartment restaurant in, um, Comnix. Basically, new development, although Paul Park's tax base is usually assigned to zero, this year, the state assigned to those the tax base growth factor of one point zero zero two one. And normally, it is, it is basically slight increase. Also, a benefit this year from the fact, by the fact that we pilot paying the little taxes on fifteen rubina expired, that, that amount, and then add it to the, um, tax base, and that also increased the overall amount. Based on those calculations, the tax levy provides twenty five million, five twelve, four twenty eight, considered for the tax cap. After the two point three three percent increase to the last year's tax levy, the proposed tax levy intended by twenty five million, five hundred, one thousand, nine hundred, twenty one dollars. Below that, in order to tax levy increase to twenty two percent. So I've got an explanation there. It's, uh, from a few messages to the tax cap.
Good night. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Now, at this time, if you have any thoughts or comments on this on the local law to override the tax cap.
I'm sorry, I think I can hear. Is my phone?
I'm sorry. Yes, it is.
You don't want to be in the air.
Again, this is, we are in the middle of a public hearing for, uh, local law to override the tax cap. Budget hearing will immediately follow this. Um, if anybody has any comments right now regarding to this local law that would allow the village to override the tax cap for this year, we would ask you to please come up now and make any comments that you can to me. Okay? Here we are now. I will go to the board one more time, just to see if anybody else has any more comments. Okay, with that, I would ask for motion to close the public hearing and reserve decision.
So.
Mr. Mayor, would you please forward the word. Justice Dastrell?
Aye.
Justice Chant?
Aye.
Justice Chara?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes that public hearing. We will go right into the public hearing for, uh, the budget. Um, I want to thank everybody, uh, for being here tonight. As I said, as has been said, this local law gives us the ability to override the tax cap. The budget being proposed does not override the tax cap. Uh, but it also, again, gives us the ability to do that should something arise that would cause the budget between now and when it's filed to, to, uh, and adopted to, uh, that we have some type of issue that we would have to do that, we are set to do that. With that, we will, again, open up the public hearing for the, uh, for our budget hearing now. And with that, Mr. Mayor, would you please read the legal notice?
Yes. Legal notice, the taxpayers of the incorporated village of Paul Park. Notice is hereby given that the tentative budget of the incorporated village of Paul Park since June first, twenty nineteen, to May first, twenty twenty, this year has been completed by the budget officer and filed, a copy filed from the office of the village park at Village Hall. The same will be available for public inspection during office hours from Monday to Friday, eight thirty a.m. to four thirty p.m. Until April tenth, twenty nineteen. Budget hearing will be held on Wednesday, April tenth, twenty nineteen, and will begin at eight p.m. in the village hall, one floor of the Paul Park. The purpose of the budget hearing is to hear any and all persons in connection therewith and to consider such budgets for final adoption. Only budget business shall be discussed in the meeting. Copies of the tentative budget will be available commence on Monday, April first, between the hours eight thirty a.m. and four thirty p.m. at Village Hall. The maximum compensation proposed from all sources under such budget to village justice is ten thousand dollars. Mayor, ten thousand dollars, and each trustee, five thousand dollars per year. Okay, March twenty seventh, twenty nineteen, or, or if it's needed, it's two twenty one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would just ask everyone, if you do want to comment on the budget itself, there is possibly, possibly we've adopted, is there are assignment sheets at the front. Uh, we ask you to please fill those out. I believe, uh, the volume is up and the warrant are outside. Um, if you could please fill out one of those forms right outside the door, if you want to comment on the budget. Um, and then we will take them in order as we get them. Okay? But in the meantime, before that starts, I would ask Mr. Mayor, if you have anything else you would like to, uh, read on it. Ed Service?
Sure, I'd, yes, Mayor, just want to, um, brief, um, synopsis. Uh, as we've done prior year, we will go through the budget. Um, just in general, as I mentioned before, this year, um, the tax levy increase, two point two nine percent, proposed under the tentative budget. So I know that the tax levy would be the amount raised on all property developments to, um, raise the amount needed to pay, uh, for bill services coming here. After all, revenue source is taken into consideration. Distinction between that and tax rate, just want to answer that one more time. This year, the tax rate is only going, going, is going up, one point seven six percent, obviously only, uh, but it is lower than the tax levy rate. And if you look at page three of here's the budget, you can see the, um, the growth in the assessed value from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, the tax evaluation number, um, one hundred and seventy million, one fifty five, eight thirty one. And it grew over nine hundred thousand dollars to one hundred and eighty eight thousand, one twenty five, seven forty three. That's attributable to a few other factors, the new developments we talked about, the reductions or exemptions, and one of those reduction exemptions being the pilot coming on, uh, fifteen rubina. So that has the effect of, um, lowering tax rate, uh, compared to tax level now. Just want to discuss a few of the main drivers in the, in the tax, um, in the budget preparation. We come to prior budget hearings, the, um, one of the driving forces of the increases in the past seven years. A bit of health insurance costs, both the building, the increase to be associated in the row. Um, past year, um, it was coming here, we were getting a slight rate, the objective rate of the increases for health insurance is only two point seven percent. So that, that is, is an increase, but that's a great increase as we prior years. Uh, this year, we're offering aside, um, certain funds for Belmonts to pay for the, um, anticipated legal costs in, in the village reviewing that, legal and other costs of, um, consultants to review what the E S D has proposed. Uh, you'll, you'll see in the budget, um, line fourteen, twenty, we'll do a three hour length of legal. An extra fifty, also reserved money from prior year, um, that would be available to pay those fees. One of the biggest, by far, the biggest increase is the expense for police termination pay, uh, going up, over forty thousand dollars. That should set many retired reals, um, that is a big increase. It does represent an un, a target debt in the village. Um, so in one sense, we're paying off the prior due liability, but also those seven terminations allow the village to hire seven new officers at lower rates of pay. Um, you will get the, the salary lines of the police that decreases a small amount, even though it's only three years ago for salary. Another, uh, factor driving the budget increase, um, this year is certain change in the recycling market. That's impacting both the expense side of the budget, in that we're anticipating the, the increase of course disposing of our recyclables, increasing by approximately fifty thousand dollars. But also, it impacts us on the revenue side, and that we're no longer receiving any revenue for selling our recyclables. Um, this year, we're losing eighteen thousand dollars in revenue, um, selling recyclables in the past, and that's the numbers. The amount we've received for selling recyclables has decreased year after year, and that, and that's just in the past, we received fifty thousand dollars a year for selling recyclables. Next year, we're definitely a year over. And then on the revenue side, correcting the budget this year, um, there are a lot of unknown variables. We probably read in papers, government form overpose, cutting, uh, living and name funding for all cities and villages, uh, most cities and villages. Walmart's cut in that, we've been twenty seven, two thousand dollars. Unfortunately, the Senate Assembly, um, were able to have touched some stores upon the budget, but there's still some issues regarding that, and some difficulties. So, and, and at the time of the tentative budget was filed, it was far uncertain, so that number was excluded from the budget. Um, it's also very questionable whether we're receiving our share of accounting sales tax, uh, revenue sharing. Um, we advise that may still be in the budget, um, so at that time, tentative budget had been filed. Those two are revenue items, is very much so.
Thank you very much. I want to just take this opportunity to thank, uh, Jerry, Henry for all of his work on this budget, but all of our staff. You know, this takes a lot of time and effort on everybody's part every year. It's a major part of what our department heads do. And not only that, but it's not only just preparing this budget for this year, it's all year long watching the budget they're working with and then taking that old budget and melding it into this one. So I want to thank all of our department heads and our staff. Uh, our Deputy Treasurer, Kathleen Mack, who keeps all the books and be sure that we're, we're doing everything with all the filings and things that we're supposed to thank you, Kathleen. Boy, you're the one for your work. Um, it's, it's a large and momentous effort to get this document to where it is every year, and I just want to thank the staff and all of their work and efforts to look at their departments, make sure they understand what's going on. When we suggest that we need to keep taxes down, they come right out and figure out ways to help us do that. So I want to thank them all for their efforts. Thank you all very much. With that, we will go into the budget document itself. Uh, what we're going to do very simply to try and make this move faster is to just hit the highlights. So if we, if there's no changes on a page, we're just going to go right over that page. Um, or a line, we're, we're just, if there are no changes in the budget, as we're being saying, we're just going to hit the highlights of the changes so that otherwise, we don't want everybody to, I know how, how those chairs, those benches are, and sitting there for hours is not something I think everybody wants to do. So we will, uh, we will move this as fast as possible. So what I'm going to ask you to do is Jerry's already gone over page, uh, one, number one, and two and three, basically, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go into the actual budget itself, and we'll start on page one. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of, uh, couple of things, as, as Jerry mentioned. Uh, our first line, um, you'll see the variances, and that's two point two nine percent. Um, that is the tax, uh, increase here. Again, the tax cap for this year is two point three three percent, so we were to stay under it. Um, the only other major change on, on this page is that you will see, um, that the pilot has expired on fifteen rubina and has been added into the normal tax rules. On page two, uh, again, if you take a look, we're seeing, uh, an increase in some of our meters uh, over the whole network party model, seeing people using that more and we use, so that's kind of, not a lot, but about ten percent. Um, we also see, as, as Jerry mentioned, site interview and things like that, because of all of the, uh, some of the building that's going on, people changing, doing changes to their houses and buildings, we're seeing that go up a little bit. Um, we also received a grant, or we anticipate receiving a D W Y grant this year. It's a two thousand dollar grant. It's, uh, that's something new for us this year. Uh, so I want to thank the police department for their efforts in getting that. Um, page three, we'll take a look. Um, we are seeing a, uh, after many years of declines in our investments, we are seeing it start to tick up a little bit. So, uh, while the percentage looks a lot, um, anything going on a positive end for our investments is one of the things, so we did see them, you know, anticipated increase in our investments, uh, to that. Page, page four, uh, again, uh, Jerry mentioned this. Um, this is revenue for the, the sale of newspapers, uh, as a recycling item. That market has gone by the wayside right now, so all the revenue we see, we're used to see from that is now gone, and we anticipate actually a fee and a cost to get rid of those recyclable items. That is not happening just here, but it's happening everywhere. Page five, you can take a look at, uh, again, these are just minor changes in, uh, in our fuel agreements. As everybody knows, we have, uh, our gas pumps not only fuel our vehicles, but the school districts, our local villages around us, and the municipal regions that we have of all of those municipalities. It is, uh, it is a great thing that we do. It is a great thing we do for all of, uh, the, the surrounding areas. Um, it's worked very well for years, and these are just the changes that you'll see in that, okay? Um, but the highlight I want to read is the state, the state revenue sharing. Again, this was, as Jerry mentioned, the funding that Mayor State gave us. We have left it out of the budget. We are anticipating it coming back, but the problem is we don't know how it's coming back, or through what channels it's coming back. So rather than, if it does come back, all well and good, uh, we will, we will be able to do certain things with it. But the reality is, is how we get that, uh, right now is still in question, so we won't hold off on that right now. Um, page six, you will see, uh, again, our share of county sales tax. Uh, that is a decrease, and again, at the time the tentative budget was filed, we were not getting that. It has been determined, and we hope and anticipate that, and then told that we're getting that back. Um, but until we see how we're actually getting it back, if it is coming back in the form that it should come back, uh, until we get all of those details, we will hold off having it in the budget right now and, uh, continue on. Because again, you know, until we know it, and until we have the money in hand, that's, uh, that's something we don't want to anticipate, but we may not see. Homeland Security, this was a grant, uh, that we received for bulletproof vests. Um, that grant, we don't anticipate getting this year, so that money has been taken out of the budget. And then finally, uh, a reduction in the capital projects for, uh, uh, painting, and we will be painting, you know, the centennial on Centennial Hall. That, as we close the deal, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, uh, the sale of Centennial Hall, that will be taken out, taken care of. So with that, um, page seven, there are no changes. Page eight, um, you will see an increase in salaries again, uh, judicial, uh, side of, uh, our, uh, village, and this is in the court system. Um, that is due to, to a promotion in that, a well-deserved promotion, um, so that is the, the increase you see there. Um, page nine, there is no changes. Page ten, again, you see the salaries, um, you see a, a small increase in the salaries there, and that's the administrative, uh, part of, of, uh, village salaries. The, uh, the increase you see in overtime, which is basically only five hundred dollars, seems like a large percentage, but, um, we're, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of things going on. We need help at, at times when taxes are due and, and permits are due and things like that. So that's really, that's all about. Uh, again, it's a minor increase in overtime and that thing. Um, we do see a, a small uptick in the fees our auditors are charging, uh, if you go down to one, four twenty nine. Um, again, it's a two thousand dollar increase in their fee. Um, they have been a very successful and helpful, helpful part of us. Um, you will also see an increase of about a thousand dollars in, um, in what the cost of issuing our bonds and vans. Um, and that's, of course, for our legal expenses and things like that. Minor increase, uh, it looks like twenty five percent, but it really only amounts to that thousand dollars, so. Page eleven, there are no changes. Page twelve, again, no changes. Page thirteen, you will see, um, a change in our printing and stationery and things like that. Um, we are, we are, of course, uh, like everybody else, printing letters on computers and things like that, but don't need the stationery to. Um, we haven't had, had to use as much of a cost for that, so that line has gone down. Okay? And then, uh, you look at page fourteen, um, you will see an increase, um, this is the assessor's office. Um, you will see an increase in the deputy assessor, um, that was his, uh, his training was done. Also, the deputy assessor has taken on a number of additional roles in addition to doing our assessment here. Um, uh, Mike Derby has, has taken on a role of assisting in our investments and things like that, due to his background in investment banking and things like that. So we are, uh, we, rather than pay somebody else, bring somebody else full time, he's taken on those roles. And so that is a, a very good thing for us, because not only do we get the benefit of his background, it also costs us a lot less than having to hire someone. Um, again, you'll see, uh, again, our overtime costs have been reduced, um, because while he has gotten an increase in his salary and, and in full time status as deputy assessor, um, he normally qualifies for overtime, so that overtime is now gone. So that's added, added there. And then you will see a, a reduction, a pretty large reduction in our commercial appraisals and, uh, appraisals for sorority cases and things like that, um, that's due to reflecting in what we actually do in, in the cost of those that run down. Um, we've also reduced our training inside our budget a little bit, uh, again, by six, under about eight hundred dollars there. Page fifteen, there are no changes. Page sixteen, you will see changes in our professional services. These are, uh, we are in the middle of our C S E A negotiations. Uh, and, uh, we will be seeing, uh, an increase in, in expenses for, um, our, our contractual services for that, legal and, and otherwise. Uh, but you will also see that we've, uh, we've started to lower our, for legal filings and things like that. Uh, we see a reduction in that time as well, because again, it reflects what we're actually doing. I want to thank the local board, so just walking in from here. Yeah, I forgot to hover there. Well, uh, but I also want to, uh, to mention that, uh, we have included in, in that budget, um, and on this page, uh, fifty thousand dollars for a Belmont, a legal fee that would be associated with the Belmont Development Project that the village may have to expense, so, okay? Page seventeen, there are no changes. Page eighteen, there are no changes. Page nineteen, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Mayor, Kevin Fischer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you for all the residents who, uh, come out. I appreciate it. Uh, shared services, this is the section for maintenance and upkeep of villages, buildings, and those all five houses in the library. All of the staff are on supervisor and three full-time painters. The overall budget shows a decrease of seventy thousand dollars following some of the primary changes. Personal services shows a very seven thousand dollar decrease due to the reduction of one full-time painter. Line four oh six shows a decrease of point three hundred dollars due to general decreases in supply usage over the past few years. For sixteen, building electricity shows a decrease of five thousand due to the L E P replacement light program that was initiated this year now at the D P W garage. Line four thirty nine, window cleaning shows a decrease of thirteen hundred dollars due to the minimal uses of the photovoltaics this year. This line was, we jumped in, so the village saw it one time a year and the library twice. If required, at a point in time, one big amount of that line. Line four four six, set there a whole source of decrease of fifteen thousand dollars due to the dispaid sale of the building, which the mayor recently mentioned, Jerry. Uh, line four four nine, library shows a decrease of three thousand dollars due to the updated H VAC equipment, which will reduce quickly. Of course, the ongoing tasks. And four fifty, village hall, although there'll be a decrease in the budget numbers, the actual financials of seventy two thousand dollars from general utility maintenance and unanticable capital equipment services. Uh, repairs for equipment shows a decrease of four thousand dollars due to the installation of a new trailer for village hall and upgrade to the trailer for the library, reducing the maintenance issue on these two lifts. Uh, line four fifty six, we test the water up to fifteen hundred dollars decrease due to general decreases in usage over the past few years. And this line is in the used to account for the care of four vehicles used by the farmer. From page twenty one, that's override. This section is for maintenance and upkeep of the village's fleet of vehicles. This includes eighteen police vehicles, fifteen fire alarm vehicles, fifty five D P W vehicles, and forty seats of a small company. All of the staff are on supervisor, they're paying the taxes. The overall budget shows a small increase of three hundred dollars. Uh, line one hundred, personal services shows an increase of three thousand due to charger step increases. Uh, line four oh six, supplies, four thousand dollars due to a general decrease in the overall usage of the past few years. Uh, this is line sort of items like fuel oil, paper trees, and so. Line five, four nineteen, water, the five hundred dollar increase due to the increase of the cost of water and because the D P W has been sending out the water truck daily, the increase of five baskets around the village. Previously, the water truck only went out two times a week. Uh, twenty three, Mr. Mayor, question?
Page twenty three, there are no changes. Again, this is our central unit. Page twenty four, um, this is our insurance, cost of our insurance. Um, again, it's, uh, when we, when we take a look at this, our policies have gone up, um, slightly, oh, one point three eight percent increase, which is about a four thousand dollar increase. Um, and that includes everything from our work, excess workers' comp policies to, to everything through, um, fire department cancer coverage, cyber, and cybersecurity, and everything with that. Uh, the big here is the nineteen ninety account, uh, and that is The big here is the 1990 account, and that is our contingent fund. Over the years, we have been putting money into that fund in anticipation of settling certain labor contracts and the like. We have settled our police contract, and that has come out of there, so that's, that's a, you know, while there were other, you know, other things like snow and other emergencies come out of this as well, we have been putting money into that for that, so that's why you see a bigger decrease this year in that fund. With that, I will turn it over to Trustee Archie Chang.
The 2018 Annual Police Department Report will be online in two days, but let me say it was very interesting reading. The department responded to 5,143 calls for service. There were 1,698 summonses issued for moving violations, 10,941 parking tickets. In 2018, an organization called Alongside Oregon, our, our, sorry, our village to be the 68th safest place in the United States of America, and that was a year where 75 were reported. Our 2018 numbers show 41 crimes being committed, a reduction of 41%, and accordingly, we should rise from the 68th place, which is truly outstanding to begin with anyway. However, this protection is serviced as a price tag. At present, line 31, 20 lines on pages 25 and 26, total $71,94,000, an increase year over year of 4.69%. This year is one great change for our department. A retirement incentive was offered, last year culminating in the retirement of two lieutenants, two sergeants, two police officers, all senior employees with over 200 years of cumulative service in Paw Paw. Big driver's termination pay has been increased by over 355% due to the retirement. There are seven retirees accounted for in this, in this line that are new, plus four older ones that have still paying out on. Yet despite two years, I'm sorry, and we did a, like, borrowing agreement was finalized that was two years late, so despite two years of payment of retroactive pay, current salary line on 0100 has been reduced by 1.9%. Furthermore, retirement costs are mainly a change, a reduction of 1.44%. The, you still notice in the tool online that cars are down to zero there, we are going to include that in the capital line. I will say to you that we have made applications to the MTA to utilize the community benefit fund to purchase two police cars, inasmuch as we expect the more enforcement of our traffic laws on Cobra Avenue is closed. Finally, due to settlement of the contract, infusion of leadership, enthusiasm of our younger and new officers, our police department under the leadership of Commissioner Stephen McAllister stands ready to approve training for themselves, continue education for our residents in schools, and increase enforcement of laws and responsiveness to our residents. I want to thank each and every member of the department for their dedication to service, compassion, and responsiveness.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go to Dr. Ellen Kamala.
Good evening, everyone. I will be happy to review the budget changes for Paw Paw Fire Department on pages 27 through 29. Our Paw Paw Fire Department has 151 very active, well-known members, including our chiefs, officers, firesiders, and rescue squad members. They are organized into five companies, alert, the ladder, rescue, located in headquarters in this building, Lions Company on Holland Avenue, and the active company on Holland Street Avenue. In 2018, our fire department responded to 1,341 total calls. Of that number, 887, or about two-thirds, were rescue calls. I will be now reviewing the changes in the 3411 lines, which is the fire department code. First of all, in code 0207, our uniforms on fire department banners, dress uniforms on many occasions, we purchased uniforms for new members, replaced those that have been damaged by wear and tear, include jackets, hats, and pants, and we've added to $1,000 to that line. 0401 is the gas and water line, we are increasing that by decreasing $1,300 based on our usage and frequency. The 0408 line, very important, that contains oxygen. Our chiefs and ambulance, all carrying ambulance, all carry a quart of oxygen tanks, the ambulance also carries a water supply, the reduction of $500 in that allocation, less usage, just lower actual cost based on history, so we brought that down, even though our need for stays the same. Or going on to the next page, 0411, that is actually a fire prevention improvement, line 21, increasing by $500. Our fire department prevention programs and improvement programs are increasing and require materials. Our department reps go into the schools very often and give the organization to do fire education, visit businesses, and with individual information consultation on what those businesses need to do for fire prevention and fire safety. Secondly, we have fire prevention events at our firehouses, and that includes advertising, and as I said, the other fire disco is improvement methods, which is very exciting, the advertising for that. We get, get about 10 new members a year, that is often offset by those who leave the department for various reasons, but we're quickly on ready initiative for our department. Going on to 0421, that is contract and maintenance agreements, that is being decreased by $3,000 to the fire department to provide full services, as they do, because relying on a lot of various physical equipment. It includes the communication equipment, which notifies fire department that they have to respond to a fire in emergency, as well as communication with Fire Comp, which is the central organizational leader of local, all local fire departments, technology services, testing of air packs, post-testing, testing wild medical, putting in our ambulances, stretcher, portable KGs, they carry, the APDs all require testing, as does ladder testing. We will have a reduction this year of the $3,000 because something that is tested every three years, the rope system, the safety harness testing, is not available for this year, that's been on the table for many years. 0455 is repairs to equipment, which we're increasing by $2,000, as of course repairs. 0478, Contract Fire Protection, was increased by $1,000, that is the contract new fire department funds allocated to each, each fire company during current budgets, including equipment and training at night report, from what the fire department is doing, also covers various activities. Total fire department budget is decreasing by $1,000 for current fiscal year, or minus 24%. Current post-budget is $407,800. An echo of Trustee Chang's comments, the police department, I also want to, again, thank our all volunteer fire department for the tremendous dedication, service they provide 24/7 to our residents, which as you can see, the budget includes many different activities, including firefighting, rescue, and making sure the strength.
Page 30, line is $250, we got something to say, but we keep it at $250 in cash flow. Page 31. Page 31, Public Safety, Safety Section. This section is for the bond building, which is responsible for reviewing all plans committed of operations and instructions. The village board also has permits that makes required inspections during construction. This is done to ensure compliance with New York State multiple codes, leads to the issue of specific hot frequency and specific compliance within the village. This department's staff are superintendent buildings, one building inspector, secretary of zoning board, has three full-time employees. Over the past year, there's been a record number set in record consented number of applications, and there's been 22 zoning cases and 126 architect review, architectural review cases, and 813 permits approved. The overall budget shows a decrease of $7,000. Primary changes are as follows. Line 100, Personal Services, shows a decrease of $7,000 due to the transfer and fall of salary monthly due to the expansion of responsibilities that person to the DPW administration. When I get to that section, we'll see the increase. Line 406, Supplies shows a decrease of $1,000 due to the decrease in supply usage over the past few years. What there is, Professional Services, which is used for outside professional firms to assist, shows a decrease of $25,000 due to the recent decrease in the need for those services. Line 416, Repairs, due to general decrease in use over the past few years, shows a decrease of $1,000 to conference expenses, is due to a decrease of 800 due to a general decrease in use over the past few years. I'd like to take this time to thank our superintendent, Senator Swinski, who still involved in the rest of the village's progress, for the efforts and assistance over the past year, and going forward, there's a number of significant projects within the village that have been completed.
Trustee Chang.
This section is in reference to emergency management budgets. We usually use this, this budget line to versus emergencies, supplies, just some equipment like that, and there's another, I'm hoping, favorite part.
I'd like to thank, that is, that is, not only civic association, but also as one of the heads of our emergency management, our emergency fairness community, so thank you, Tom. At this time, we're going to page 34, this is fees that, things that were invested in this. We definitely have an offset in revenue for this as well, so we have $5,000, there's an offset by being paid for copies of those documents and the like. Page 35, this is, again, it's $900, this is health, use prevention. There were different things, different aspects of the Health and Wellness Committee in this budget, that was formed this year, and we thank Trustee Shiala, the Deputy Mayor Kamala, and the entire committee for the work that they're doing in the Wellness Education Committee, and this is a month of, um, I'm sorry. Joe, Joe was a member of that committee, so Joe hadn't been here as well. Also, I'll turn it over now to Trustee Deputy Mayor Kevin Fisscher.
Page 36, DPW Administration. This section is for the administration of the common public parks. The department's staff are superintendent DPW, superintendent public parks, and one full-time, one part-time employee. The overall budget shows an increase of approximately $17,000. Primary changes are as follows. Line 100, Personal Services shows an increase of $12,000 due to the transfer of salary from the public safety that I just mentioned, that person doing more work from DPW that they've done in building parks over the last year or so. Line 401, Gasing and Oil, shows an increase of $12,000 due to deputy superintendent that now has additional vehicle capacity used. Line 435, Rental Maintenance Radios, shows an increase of $3,000, which will be used for this one new radios installed across. The tax to express it shows an increase of $1,600, and this is due to the increasing need to learn about new development in the public park industry, inclusive of recycling, which we talked about earlier. Page 38, Street Maintenance. This section is for highway department and road repairs. Highway department repairs and maintains, makes maximum 37 miles of streets and parking lots, and this includes sweeping, line striking, and dilapidated, salting, sanding, and, the department also feeds us donations and maintains the drainage of the streets. Under our new supervisor, the street maintenance program is doing more extensive repairs on streets. This department staff are a former, will receive the higher workforce with one supervisor, seven drivers, six laborers, and consists of 23 vehicles and other associated apparatus. The overall budget shows a decrease of $30,000. Line 100, Personal Services, shows a decrease of approximately $75,000 due to retirements and a decrease in one labor. Line 102, Overtime shows a decrease of $5,000. Line 450, Street Maintenance and Side Work, which are being decreased by $45,000 to bring this line back into the department's budget. This line is used for the force of putting in handicapped parents and something to do with the street repairs, along with sidewalks and damage to your tree removal, and miscellaneous concrete work around the village. Line 416, Repairable Trucks, is being increased due to, by $5,000, due to increased repairs on our beaches. Page 40, Snow. This section is used for the snow removal. This year, approximately, it was about $35,000, thankfully it was a very mild year, a couple nights, a couple of weeks, a fall. Additionally, we are currently investigating the existing, replacing the existing soul shed due to the exceeding of useful life. If a new shed is required, we'll be trying to, upon, we'll be paid it over two years. For most of the, 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 the trainings. Page 41, Street Lighting. This section is used to pay for the Trustee Bill, along with repairs and maintenance of our streetlights. The overall budget shows an approximate increase of $6,000, which is in line with 435, maintenance, which reflects the increase in the amount of the annual contract that was approved last June for the person who fixes streetlights. As previously mentioned, at Pride One, we, we saw the pilot of LED lighting in the village, Superintendent Swinski and Deputy Superintendent A, are currently researching and experimenting pilot, and we'll have a front update in the next month, so on how and where that pilot will be examined. Continuing on, page 42, Wall Street Parking. This section is used for the collection of funds of the repair of our units, and includes salaries for unimmediately metered tenants. The overall budget shows a decrease of $34,000. Line 200, Equipment, being increased by $95,000 due to recent bangles in the meters, they need to, that the leader is investigating replacing the meters. Line 435, Outside Striking, being reduced to $2,000 due to the general decrease in usage over the past few years and the fact that DPW is doing more of that than half. And then line 500, Tree More Rental Fees, being decreased by $40,500 due to the little that are contained in rental fee during the upcoming year due to the MLU with the LIRR, which is tied to the third track construction. Mr. Mayor, page 44.
Yes, page 44. This is the first one, I can see a decrease of about $3,000. We've been replacing decorations and things that go on our streetlights for our holidays, also our Chamber of Commerce Christmas tree at the Christmas event and things like that, so due to the fact that we, the decorations are pretty much bought and things like that, we can reduce this one a little bit. But I do want to highlight line 405, there are no changes. This is the estimated cost for Vertex, our engineers, and Beverly and Diamond, our legal counsel, in regard to the third track project. So while you see an expense or anticipated expense of about $150,000, that is offset by the community benefit fund that was created in an annual year, so there's a resident, an offset in the community benefits with that. But overall, this is, this is decreasing. The next page, page 45, no changes in that, that is our program for seniors and the rent they pay that's in head, so along with the town council, so that, and I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Kevin Fisscher.
Page 46, Culture, Record Parks. This is for the park maintenance, they ensure that parks, including portions of the Rogers, various park parks, mediums, et cetera, are all maintained. They also work to ensure that our special events, since we're letting the street fair runs soon, this department's staff by supervisor, one senior ransky, one owner, someone operating one full-time laborer, along with official summer labors, that consist of three vehicles and other associated equipment apparatus. The overall budget shows a decrease of $24,000. Primary changes are, line 100, you see a decrease of approximately $28,000 due to the retirement of one individual. Line 102, Overtime, shows a decrease of $1,000 due to general decrease in the past few years. And line 419, Water, is being increased by approximately $5,000, and that's due to adding additional sprinklers, additional sprinkler systems throughout the village, our parks. I think we finally get to the end. I think, we finally get to the end of, of, of E C R.
What's E C R? This section refers to the recreation center. Uh, recreation center continues to be a first-class facility providing year-round activities and meeting spaces for our community organizations. It's the home of our Little League, Indian Soccer, screaming eagles, roller hockey, as well as live day and elevator victory field day. Adult basketball, volleyball, softball, and newly introduced pickleball are all enjoyed by our residents during the season. The newly transformed tiny town, along with the reconditioning of two of our ballfields, one now being used for intermediate play, all took place within the last year and are currently being used and enjoyed by our residents. Thank you to Kirk Maitre and his, and his hard-working staff at the recreation center for keeping the facility always ready for play and a great place to enjoy. The proposed budget shows an increase of two percent or fourteen thousand dollars. The increase is noted on page forty-eight, line zero zero one, which is an increase of twenty-two hundred dollars for a proposed increase in full-time or part-time seasonal staff salaries, most within the range of twenty-five cents to a dollar each per hour. On line four oh six, is a two thousand increase for supplies and, for supplies for office and buildings. On line four fifteen, is an increase of also two thousand dollars for supplies needed for our belt volleyball and basketball equipment. Next page, page forty-nine. Line four thirty-five, there's an increase of nine thousand dollars for our maintenance service contracts for the toilets, the sprinkler system, elevators, and tennis courts. Line four forty, shows an increase of nine hundred dollars for increase in plantings and seeds. Line four fifty, shows an increase of two thousand dollars for repairs to our H A V, uh, H A P, H A V system, bathrooms, and electric. Line four fifty-two, shows an increase of one thousand dollars for general maintenance repairs. Moving to page fifty, there's no, there's no changes. Page fifty-one, is, is the current of cultural and recreation new programs. That program's budget increased, increased by point four seven percent or six hundred twenty-five dollars, which is noted on page on line one hundred. The salary increases for the council supervisors of new programs, most in the range, once again, of twenty-five cents to one dollar per hour.
Thank you very much. Page fifty-two, there is no changes in here, this is, uh, is our cost associated with archives of records and, uh, our, uh, historical, historical, uh, record keeping. Um, page fifty-three, you will see, um, costs and, a cost increase in line four ninety, uh, a slight increase of two point one seven percent, basically is a, just about two thousand dollars, a thousand dollar increase. Um, it's built in every year in our contract with the fire department, um, for their annual inspection, et cetera. Um, page four ninety-six, uh, you'll see a small, on four ninety-six, a small increase for the verification committees, two hundred and fifty dollars, um, going for their supplies for that committee. Both of those, again, are volunteers, they work extremely hard, ones who are right to need to protect that community, so I want to thank them very much again, as been echoed before. So, without too much, you, Deputy Mayor, can I have your show again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, page fifty-four is for, uh, zone board, and you see a, 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 an increase in, line four thirty, um, this is line for investigative services to, to deal with general and special cases, and we haven't used that line in a couple of years, so, uh. Uh, page fifty-five is for, uh, our factory board, and there is no change in that page. Again, zone board and our factory board are all zone board, uh, news. Page fifty-six, uh, refuse and, uh, this section is for sanitation department. They are responsible for the pickleball and, we're going to drop it off, of, of, of seven thousand tons of refuse, thirteen hundred tons of bulk refuse, thirteen hundred tons of yard waste, and sixteen hundred tons of recyclables at disposal for each year of our residents and businesses. The department also assists in snow removal when necessary. Department staffed by supervisors, four guards, six recyclers, and consists of ten vehicles and other associated apparatuses. Additionally, this section also includes a cost for the build-to-disposal base, either through incineration or recycling. Uh, the overall budget shows a, a, a trade of four thousand dollars. Line one hundred, personal services, shows a decrease of approximately forty-five thousand dollars due to the requirement of, of, by two hundred supplies, shows a decrease of approximately two thousand, uh, due to the decrease usage over the past few years. Line four thirty, recycling, is being increased by approximately fifty thousand dollars due to the dramatic increase in the cost of, uh, disposing of our recyclables. The change in this law is in line with publicized, our newspaper, and our TV news story. Primarily due to trying on only accepting for the ninety-nine percent pure paper, metal, plastic, any container with a screw weight, foam, et cetera, is now being rejected, and therefore, the vendors who pay our recycling, now that you've ensured that they will be accepted, which required of use additional, significant additional processing, hence increased cost. Page fifty-seven, street cleaning. Section for street cleaning department, staffed by two motor, and operated, we drive the street to ensure that our residential emergency cleaning between, approximately increase in five hundred fifteen hundred dollars. The changes are, line four oh six, supply being decreased by approximately thousand dollars due to trend and damage over the past few years, and line four sixty, repairs to trucks being increased by two thousand dollars due to the expensive, we, we provide our equipment in fleet, and one example is two weeks ago, the Hydolox, or the two thousand eight street sweeper, went from the stable to the street, the street sweeper, uh, that had been pulled back to, to, to China.
Line fifty-eight, I'm sorry, page fifty-eight, no change, this is with the Bazzneck, um, this, this, okay.
Uh, page fifty-nine, this is all sewer, section for the maintenance of our sewers, and consists of one tram body vehicle, it being decreased by approximately two thousand dollars. On line four oh one, it being increased by thousand dollars due to the increase of used and the usage in the course of the past few years, and repairs to truck being decreased by thousand dollars due to the upgrade of the, uh, four hundred and hundred tram body that we got. Uh, page sixty, shade trees. Uh, this section is for our green farms. They are responsible for the care maintenance of our trees and provide many barriers to make all part of, or more beautiful. The department is staffed by one senior tree pruner, one tree pruner, and one motor vehicle equipped and driver, and one other full-time employee, along with sixteen on the park on the place. At this rate, this section also includes the cost of the village pays to annually purchase and plant additional trees to replace those that have to be removed, develop and new trees as pots, if you use additional employer foliage. The budget has an overall decrease of approximately thirty-five, thirty-four thousand dollars. Primary changes are, personal services, line one hundred, shows a decrease of twelve thousand due to senior employees in the village and then being replaced, thus one of the costs. Line one oh two, overtime being decreased by approximately two thousand dollars for the, the store belongs. Along those lines, one of the goals of the department is to concentrate on trimming along heavy, heavy traffic areas, telling you work on weekends due to the need for road vehicles. You may have seen correlations about the, the two weekends. Line two hundred, equipment being decreased by eight hundred dollars, this line fluctuates depending on equipment usage. Um, four oh one, gas mainly decreased to twenty-five hundred dollars due to the decrease of usage across over the past few years. Line four oh six, supply being increased by eighteen hundred dollars due to the increase in, of course, the violence of the state future in progress and changes. Line four thirty-five, outside contract being decreased by twenty-five thousand dollars due to the increased efficiency within the department and the associated reduction of the need of outside tree removal services, some trees are now being removed in-house, and that depends on size and safety difficulties. And lastly, line four forty, planting and spraying is increased, being increased by five thousand dollars to purchase additional trees. The second year in a row, we have added an additional five thousand dollars this far. This will allow us to plant approximately forty more trees than we have done each year, and this year, we, we plan to plant approximately two hundred trees in the village. I think this is made us going here for me tonight, so I'd like to thank the residents for coming out and learning more about the village.
There is one, yes.
Okay.
Not too much trouble. Page sixty-two, uh, this is our fee to participate in any control programs, uh, that's not showing, um, there is a, uh, page fifty, page sixty, this is our, uh, district pension fund, uh, there are two things that I want to bring your attention to, two, uh, the first is, uh, an increase due to medical claims that we have had to pay for someone around their forties, um, it's a slight increase of about just under five percent, um, but that is, again, due to increased incidences and possible surgery procedures that are being had. Um, the second, of course, is a, uh, is an increase in the, um, firefighters, uh, working in Scott, firefighters, and not district pension, but we have seen, um, two, we have accidents this year, um, and again, I would remind everybody that our volunteer fire department is that, they are volunteer fire department, um, and they do get hurt, they do, things happen, so, uh, I, I want to thank them again profusely for their time and efforts for what they do, because it's, it's dangerous, and you can see it by this, and we've increased this, uh, to probably, uh, as anticipated, and, and suffering two claims for that. Uh, with that, and I think this is his last page, but I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having these people.
There you go.
Uh, the call-out agreement line, uh, this line is used for expenses for the call-out on sharing a fuel system, you see ten percent, almost ten percent decrease, and there is a corresponding adjustment in the revenue line, and we'll just, going back to the norms of, 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 over the past couple of years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. With that, trustee, you are.
Thank you very much. Uh, this part of the, uh, the budget refers to, uh, four village studios. The studio celebrated its twenty-third anniversary and continues to receive annual awards which shows that they produce. The studio services our village, among the knowns of village, Stuart Mann and South River Park. It receives its entire annual operating budget, from Fortune Franchise Beach, paid to the villages by Altish USA and Verizon. Each village collects five percent of revenue generated by the cable companies, of which the village retains sixty percent, and forty percent is given to the studio. The studio produces programs that attempt to inform, educate, and entertain viewers while promoting the diverse talents and contributions of community groups, organization, and individual. It's primarily staffed by volunteers who often go to their, go on to careers in the industry based on their experience at the studio. Thank you to Jim and his staff for providing such fine shows for our resident residents to enjoy. The studio decreased its bu, its budget by ten thousand dollars or six point two seven percent this year, which safely represents the funds needed for a typical year of studio operations. These reductions are noted on page sixty-five, uh, line two, two hundred, five thousand reduction in studio equipment. Line four oh four, two thousand reduction in office supplies. Line four oh six, a two thousand reduction on, on recording tapes, DVDs, and cables. Line four fifty-five, a, a five hundred dollar reduction on cameras, decks, and computers. And on line four eighty, five hundred reduction for training staff.
Thank you very much. Page sixty-six, uh, and sixty-seven represent our complete benefits, uh, they also include our fire department service award, uh, social security tax, our portion of N T A tax, uh, payments for health insurance and things like that. Uh, overall, it's a, a decrease of a little over, just over one percent, um, in expenses, but again, due to fluctuations in various costs associated with all of those expenses. Page sixty-eight, um, what you see here is the, is our bond indebtedness, um, that covers all the different bonds that town, that the village has out, um, have, again, principal payments on, on pool building, principal payments on DPW building, things like that, and overall decrease of four point four one percent, um, so, overall, actually. Um, but, uh, you know, as we pay down our bonds, as we pay down, uh, some of those expenses, we look to where we can possibly, um, take, take advantage of, of good rates and things like that to, to, to increase bond indebtedness in other areas to help us, uh, fix certain things that work and things like that in our village. Um, but our bond indebtedness is managed very, very tightly to ensure that no way that we put the village in, in a, in a, or, or horrible, uh, fiscal position by any means by what I consider mortgaging the future, we don't do that, and that's, so I want to thank Jerry, uh, Bambik especially for his oversight on, on that. Um, and, uh, page sixty-nine, what you see, um, is the, uh, is the, is the transfer, these are transfers to the library fund, our pool fund, these are the transfers from, from the, the facilities, um, to cover all of those expenses as well. With that, I'll turn it over to your trustee, you are.
Thank you. Page seventy, refers to the pool budget. Uh, pool facility is a vibrant active place, the village turns the summer season, where lifetime memories are created. It is staffed with seasonal employees, lifeguards, most of which are our young brethren, supervised by our pool director, Tom Villa, and his assistant. All of the programs are well-attended by a variety of age groups, its members and guests continue to enjoy a wonderful guest experience provided by the pool staff. Our volunteer pool committee continues to come up with creative ideas in how to increase this to a more enjoyable guest experience. This season, it will be increased entertainment along with the, the popular status of events like the team luau night. Free swim lessons, water aerobatics, consumer class will continue to be offered. There continues to be sufficient membership allowing a facility to cover its annual operating budget. Thank you to our wonderful pool staff for keeping our pool operational and a fun place to come relax during the summer season. On page seventy, on the revenue side, you'll notice that there's an increase on line five zero three one, which represents an increase of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, which represents the amount transferred from the general fund to the balanced pool budget due to the cost of the new pool. Moving to the expense side, on page seventy-one, there's an increase of four hundred forty-five dollars for salaries, uh, for the pool staff director, assistant director, and sixty-three seasonal employees, most, most of them, once again, in the range of twenty-five cents to a dollar an hour increase. On line four thirty-five, there's a proposed increase of twenty-eight hundred fifty dollars for the pool startup, drink rep, and exterminating fees. On, on line four forty, forty, page seventy, is a, a proposed increase to beautify the grounds and pool area. On line four eighty-five, there's a proposed increase of six thousand dollars for, for increased entertainment such as family nights and senior days. On line ninety-nine forty, there's a proposed reduction of five hundred seven quarter, five thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars, decreasing the cost of the pool and rec line that's coming to an end.
Trustee, which end?
Uh, page seventy-four is the revenue side of the library, um, those will be transferring, uh, I'm sorry, an increase transferred of three point seven two percent to the, to the library. On page seventy-five, you can see on line zero one hundred, is an increase of four point five one percent, and it mainly due to the hiring of a full-time children's librarian. Um, the next line is one oh, one oh two. There's been several Sunday programs being offered and special events that occur, that line is seemingly four point four three percent increase. The main recipe increases are due to office and computer upgrades for aging equipment, software updates, interlibrary fees, and a twenty percent increase in programs for adults, youths, I'm sorry, youth, toddlers, programs that are stimulating fun, educational, and well-received by all. I want to thank our director, Pat Aaron, and our entire staff, the library board, for outstanding years, for your hard work, and your uncomplimented dedication to service all of us.
Thank you. That, trustee, and I also want to commend our library board, again, the wonderful volunteer group that works really hard, uh, to make sure the library runs and provides the services it does, uh, and also a lot of time and effort that you've worked in, and thank you so much again. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we need to prompt your entire changes to the budget from next year to this year. I do have some, uh, speakers who would like to speak, and, 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 uh, again, who'd like to speak, I guess, please hold out for them, but, uh, Mr. Dennis McHenry? And I would remind everybody tonight that unfortunately, due to this being a public hearing, uh, we are only hearing comments on the budget. unit, we are only hearing comments on the budget. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to point out that Rick Stokely has been added to this gallery of mayors, and I'm sure there's other people here tonight who are probably looking to the next person to be added, including your wife.
If you look around, there's no one else on the surface yet, so give him that a look.
One more second. One more second. Thank you, thank you for what you've done, and taking care of the history of the village that I helped to do. Also, thank you for keeping the budget within the two percent cap which the governor has and the leadership of New York have put into place for all municipal counties. It's good to see full of heart, even though there's some unfunded mandates that are added, or as you pointed out, there were some, amongst money that was taken away from us from all of these, you're still able to do so. Kudos to everybody on the staff. And also, I want you, can you confirm that the assessment of homeowners has nothing to do with what's going on with the Nassau County assessment? That the assessment in full of heart is an independent assessment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes. The village has its own assessment for purposes of village taxes, for lack of a term of village taxes, so yes.
Okay, so.
Now, that being said, your school taxes are affected by whatever happens with Nassau County's assessment because the school uses Nassau County's assessment. So in your, the tax level, you see all these numbers, just, yeah, there are, our village assessments are based on our own assessment and not Nassau County's.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that, Mr. Mayor. Also, can you also confirm that most of the assessment appeals as a general basis are through the commercial taxpayers rather than the homeowners as a general proposition?
The, we do receive a fair share of residential challenges. Every one of those challenges is reviewed through a process. Every one of those challenges is looked at individually, and where it has to be reduced, it is. Where it doesn't have to be reduced, we make sure that we do that as well, to make sure that we let what we're supposed to for the village, and everybody pays their fair share.
But the vast majority of homeowners do not challenge their assessment as a general proposition, either, correct?
It's, we, no, I mean, the vast majority do not, but I mean, we do get, we do get a share, and I would say that people don't challenge.
Okay, I'd just like to turn to some specific items in the usual budget itself. Page sixteen, you noted that the Belmont Park native project which we're faced with has caused the village to have to incur the subside fees for legal expenses. As a member of the Belmont Task Force, I contest the fact that better than diamond are both efficient and effective in the legal representation which they have provided the village to pay. I'll point out that, for example, there's an organization called Elmont Against the EATMD that will have been over a hundred thousand dollars, if not more, in expensive buildings, through most of our volunteer work, that have been able to keep a containment on those costs, but there are costs of those.
There are costs to the village, and yes, we do require legal costs associated with that, and as you've seen in the budget, we include them on for that purpose, but I do want to just comment on your statement. The Belmont Task Force is a group of very dedicated and very hardworking people. Not only that, they're extremely knowledgeable people. There are several members of those people here in the audience right now. They have dedicated so much time and effort to the Belmont issue, and not only that, they have used their talents, and again, this is legal talents, these are engineering talents, these are architectural talents, these are all kinds of professional services that the people there on the task force work and use what they've done in their lifetimes to benefit our village. And yes, we cannot quantify, and we can't say thank you enough for those efforts, so I just want to point that out because it is a group of people who, as I said, who are very talented, very hardworking, but also people who use the talents in their life and their experience of work and things like that to help us, so we're very grateful for that. I want to just point that out, so.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that as a member of the task force, you have a point, and the fact of the matter is that we are facing some legal hurdles coming up, such as the final environmental impact statement and the record decision, which requires expertise by attorneys and cannot be done by laymen. And also, better than diamond, through their effort, was able, for example, to locate a secret master plan that was dated from twenty sixteen from the ESD and the New York Racing Association. And as many people know, we've been trying for years to ask for a master plan, and lo and behold, this one showed up as a result of the work of better than diamond. So I strongly support the continued retention and also the potential of further and more intensive and expensive litigation. So that's been foisted upon us, and taxpayers of full heart, and unfortunately, we get the burden of having to retain such legal expertise in better than diamond. Also, on page twenty-five, I just want to point out the number for the retirements of the police of over five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. I assume that some of those retired police recently were even made more than the commissioner himself. Am I correct, one more of them?
The cost of, the cost per visit, the cost for some of our staff is more than the salary paid for.
All right, and the village didn't take, use that technique known as less savings to account for the difference between these high earners who retired at high pay and the new policemen or police women who have come onto the payroll and saying that's a savings that we're going to add to budgets. Am I correct, Mr. Mayor?
We don't, we don't use what is concerned as savings. What we do do is we, you know, it's basically, it's a one for young, we don't, if we've lost it, it's real numbers, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Chris, and I urge this board never to adopt that rather imprecise budgetary technique which is used by, I believe, Tom Hensett, for example. On page forty-four, I note the general fund, economic development, again, the third track, another example, trustee Chiaro, expenses that the village has had from current causes more fund by the NTA and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Can you just comment on what kind of expenses the village is getting there, so?
At the president's line, most of the expenditure, we have, we have had some average spending, but most of it has been environmental review by work techs and engineering review. They come back, they make periodic inspections, tell us what they're not doing according to the MOU, tell us what they could do better, and telling us what they are applying to.
But again, these are expenses that, what, for the third track, we've been in the first place, correct? Okay, thank you.
Well, at least we're not spending one year of ours. The budgeting of your program might be staying.
We appreciate keeping, keeping track of the third track expenses to the village in real course, in order that we can demonstrate to the NTA the expenses in real dollars to the village is incurred, and so that they're committed. Also, on page forty-six, the Centennial Garden Development, as you know, I'm also president of the Full Heart Conservation Society, and just want to point out that just this week, Lynn Varne was our coordinator, that Centennial Gardens is the top place to do bird watching on the island, and two thousand dollars for such an honor, I think, is what we're, a strong proponent of Centennial Gardens. We really do need the expenses that the village has dedicated to Centennial Gardens. There's a park, for example, a park history in Franklin Square, that their expenses are over four million dollars for that park this year, and they're now focusing on setting aside three hundred thousand dollars for park improvements on one of the parks. I would love if this board would give us three hundred thousand dollars, but I don't think Mr. Van Buren would be able to keep the two percent tax gap up, so.
I mean, no one would like to keep Mr. Van Buren breathing.
Okay, and in relation to that, page forty-eight, the twenty thousand dollars to Centennial Gardens, once again, in relation to what our neighbors dedicated for their park services as compared to those of Full Heart, Centennial Gardens, twenty thousand dollars really has gone a long way, and I'd just like to thank trustee Varne to discuss some of the projects that we have in that twenty thousand dollars. For example, the Given Gardens just did this past week.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars is really meant to add to, supplement to the tremendous work of the volunteers. What's happened over the past, I'm going to say three, four years, is that not only the Full Heart Conservation Society volunteers, who have really been with the organization since the beginning of Centennial Gardens, but now we have a lot of groups such as Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts, Sawa High School, Full Heart Memorial High School, Rotary Club, and other groups joining in, who a tremendous amount of strong teamwork in the gardens. DPW has certain responsibilities there, DPW, the organizing staff work with the organizations and Conservation Society, and it's just a tremendous collaborative community effort. The Given Gardens, we've been, Conservation Society, all the groups, with DPW's help, have been planting those gardens, redoing the beds, and doing a lot of work, not only making it attractive, but making it very, very useful. So also the Centennial Gardens on the river on the right avenue, and the Chief Fairview Garden, we actually, we located a tree, a smoke push, it's called, from Plainfield Avenue and Terrace, which was seen to be in danger of getting destroyed by the dirt trap project, and we took the efforts of the DPW Conservation Society, concur, and escaped into the alley to move that into the gardens, keep it safe and wrapped, and take it here throughout the winter months, and just Saturday the duck was transplanted out into the Chief Fairview Garden, very appropriate for the reason that, as you know, line eleven, the smoke push was built, was displanted on Plainfield Avenue in the month of the worst responders. So, you know, wonderful park.
Thank you, trustee. And also, another example would be new lighting, decorative lighting, Mrs. Swinski, over at the Department of Public Works, lighting an area on Conation going to Raffin, and I'm glad to see that somebody in the budget knows that that lighting, for example, can be completed this year on Raffin Avenue going down the Full Heart Way. Is that not correct, Mr. Mayor?
We're anticipating finishing that project, yes.
And then on page sixty-six, we're talking about the termination pay of over half a million dollars, the line of the, again, the police attorney, one point one four eight million dollars, that is in addition to the over half a million dollars. So again, the Belmont Park project, we have a police force of approximately thirty-five patrol officers as well as senior management, and if we were to add another patrol because of the work of the Belmont Park, for example, that would have a significant impact on our budget, not, Mr. Mayor?
It's absolutely.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you.
Thanks again, thank you so much for your contribution. Thank you. Mr. Bob Chalmers?
Mr. Mayor, trustees, appreciate being here. I'm quite surprised it's not been a half a day. We're going to tell you. Now, listen, I just want to mention a couple of things on this. On the first page on the bottom, it says, oh, by the way, thank you, that's a monumental job to care about. I know, it's just incredible job, it's an incredible amount of time, so the work behind that is really, more and more, it's a lot of shit. The work involved in that is just incredible amount of time. Now, on this first page, it said budget proposed tax rate of thirteen point one per one hundred dollars assessed tax, and it says, based on the budget presented, the average homeowner whose house will be assessed at thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars will pay an additional ninety dollars to the each end, okay? And then it says the total of the village's tax for the home assessment is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred, will be five thousand two hundred forty-six dollars. I assume my house, I don't even know about my house, forty by hundred block, no smooth floor, with the bushes, I assume my house falls into that category. Okay, I don't know exactly.
It depends on how your house is, right?
Okay, because, because last year, my owner's tax was forty-three hundred dollars, okay? This, if I'm in that category, and I don't know whether I am or not, that would be increasing nine hundred dollars, which would be somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent.
The way you figure out a good tax increase is going to be, if you take, if your number is less than what the pension, you may also get a deduction, but.
I get a small military exemption, better, Mr. Mayor.
On your bill, it's going to have your assessed valuation, it's going to be a number of thirty-eight seven or minus one foot five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And you multiply that by the first one by a hundred, then you multiply that by the tax rate of, if you want to make a comparison, last year was, yeah, last year was thirteen point three two oh nine, take the same number, and you multiply it by the new tax rate of thirteen point five five seven, and that would be different. So, so taking an average house of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred, which is basically all assessed valuation divided by the number of parcels, that's a, that's a very complex number.
Well, based on what I paid last year, this proposed amount, I assume my house is going to be plus.
Yes, I assume so. Anyway, our funding rate should be plus in the, my, my.
Now, a couple of things in just the line I have here. The village's justice, you see there's an increase there, this budget is two hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred eleven dollars, two hundred seventy one.
I'm sorry, from two hundred seventy.
Oh, from two seventy one, yes, the increase of four thousand dollars. What's involved in that number? Is it just?
The entire village's justice, the entire board. So a big part of that number was promoted from the people in the department, but a lot of it could just be mind increases. In addition, mind increases.
How many people have been in that department?
I think there are five.
There's, there's thirty half parts and then the full part.
And then?
Full part, and then half.
Yeah, okay, okay. Same type of question. Court treasurer, one of fourteen thousand dollars, total of nine twenty-seven seventy one. Again, how many people are involved in that one? What I mean is, one, Full Heart figures.
Ten, ten people.
Ten, ten people.
Ten people.
Okay, okay. Next line, the law firm, as I understand, two hundred seventeen thousand of thirty-five thousand, I assume that John Ryan and legal fees when you have to go to court fight things?
Yeah, there's also the better than diamond amount, and at the end, fifty thousand another line, better than diamond conditions, and my funds we also set aside around the Fourth at Belmont, discussing.
Oh, yes, for the legal fees to fight things, so, yeah, you know, those are the professional services.
Right. By the way, I invited this colleague today to exchange tickets for something else to cancel, we could play with hands. It's beautiful. I don't know why, I'm saying to myself, and I'm not an island fan, I'm saying, why you aren't taking?
I knew you wouldn't be there for the game. I knew you wouldn't be there for the game.
No, I'm lying, I'm just kidding. The other thing, with the, with the police amount, that's twenty-five percent of the budget, okay? Which is, it's greatly like in the top half, and I think the general populace in the streets think it's generally top half now. I think we're sort of locked in that at this point, and I don't think much we can do about it. And people like the police. The reputation is that they're very tough on people, and they're preventive, and keep people happy, especially such as Social Queens, but still, that's twenty-five percent of the overall budget is a lot higher.
And again, the safety costs a lot, you're rated the number two safest place in the country.
Oh, no, I understand.
And I can tell you right now that the police department, the changes have just come through, especially with bringing in new officers and having older officers retire. You know, with the younger officers here, and the professional training that's grown and things like that.
like that, you know, I mean, what's happening to our village too, in regard to maybe having Belmont, the Third Track going on, construction going on right now, and things like that, our police are moving every day, every minute, trying to make sure that everything is covered. So, you know, it costs money.
Just looking at his face, 25% of the budget, how long?
I realize that, but, you know, yeah, and this is where, you know, you have to say, you made that choice, and that's where, right, that's where it is.
I think I quote Chris Seton of the.
I was just gonna say, you probably watched.
The ones that are on. I'm looking at these faces a lot of times, like flashbacks. DPW administration, now you said before that it's, perhaps, there's four people, I think? Is that what you said? I think it was four people, a director, assistant director, and two other people?
Superintendent, deputy superintendent, and.
We have clerk, and a partner.
Okay. So that includes four people. I noticed in that transportation to DPW administration, there's no volume of new employees. There's no volume.
Transportation, sorry.
Well, that's where, since I saw you.
Each of the ones, the street maintenance, the street, street man, the street lady.
The different departments have personnel.
Each of the different.
Yes, but so what I'm saying is, like, street maids, the 1 million, the 1,1, 1 million of 148,000, I thought you were going, did that include the salaries of the people in that street man? Did it include?
Yes.
Okay, so that's broken down.
Yeah, if you look at the pages in the budget, the beautiful pages, you will see.
I will. Okay. Line?
The first one, which is salaries.
Economic assistance. Does that help families in need? I don't understand what that is. That's on right below the transportation service, 71.
Economic.
Yeah, that's small amounts, some of it's economy spend for decorations, chamber commerce. The big bulk of that is, last year, we took the money in from, from the MOU for the Third Track. I think, as you may have spoken several times in the past, part of our negotiations with the Third Track, we got a $1.5 million community benefit. And each year, this cash year, we've got a lot of that on, for tax, you do all the plans. So we put that 100,000 in that one, offsetting correspondingly revenue volume of 100,000. So that money, this year, we spent mostly on for tax. In the future, the government expenses, we can charge to that budget, trying to get blue skies.
We got a pool of that, the blue skies.
Okay. So whatever we spend on, the cars, up to $1.5 million is a cost. Okay. Because that averages even reduced by 370. That, that, they take the loan.
They missed early in May, though, without the fact that we basically paid off our purchase warrant. Some of your programs are lying, the decorations, basically, I can't get into that, and that's what that is.
Okay. I was gonna ask a question about playgrounds and rent centers, but I see Kurt sitting there. He's been in the place for a long time, so I don't want him to talk. The other thing.
Is there any other departments we can bring in too?
The library fund. Again, there's one line, there's nothing, I see employee benefits, just like that control of all buildings, that's true of this. Is that everybody who works in the buildings? Benefits, just.
The two big portions of that are health benefits, and, of course, the retirement funds. And retirement funds, I mean, for the New York State control, you know, which we get told what they are, and we, basically, our health plan is, you know, the national plan, which, again, we get told with that, so.
But that library fund, again, my question is, 137, 187, up 4.5% basically, does that include the salary?
Yes.
Does that include the salary, in most cases?
Yep.
Okay. So depending on how they go, depending on how they go, that number would be actually a little bigger?
Yeah, and, again, we have money, as I said, continually, we continually put money away for those, for the negotiations. That doesn't mean, and again, it's depending on how it goes.
Right.
What the village actually spends, and where that money comes from will be determined at that time, for the most part. But that is part of, that's not part of those lines, if there is a settlement.
Let's say that, please.
Just, anyway. So, I would tell you, and again, it's not, we don't want to self-account, you know, but the reality is that, that it will come out contingent and what you did.
So that line would actually be depending.
And then appropriated forward, in future budgets, and things like that should, should be resulted.
Okay. And one last question. The debt service line, which is the third highest percentage on your budget, it's right down to the bottom of the chart. Debt service, it's like 1.87 million. Then we add, actually, 87 million, but what is that?
That's, that's, that is actually the cost, as I said before, of our bonding, what will actually cost us this year, for our bonds and any banks, and the money that we borrow to do certain things. So we still have some outstanding debt on, on this Centennial, we still have some outstanding debt on the Public Works building. Those are the two big ones, okay? And then the rest of this is small for equipment and things like that. But one of the other things that we just had, was, I'm sorry, and then the third one, of course, is the pool. So that's, you know, and then those.
So this is sort of like the, like, the type of splash fund, we can.
No, 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 it's a splash fund. First of all, first of all, the neighbors are, we tend to have splash funds. We want no splash fund. No, and continue to, please, tell me you got that right, there are no splash funds.
That's not continued.
That's what we are.
This is, this is our debt, so this is, yeah, it's a line item.
If you're letting that go, you're out. Okay? If you leave the pool, you want to come up with 6.5 million away.
Right.
You borrow, and you put the pool down. That's basically what it is. Yeah, that now makes lots of sense, I just didn't notice that. Okay? We kind of got finished. Okay, guys, thank you very much, and keep working. Please, regard to homes, everybody. Okay. Mr. Banver.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, I just want to say I'm here representing myself as a resident in the whole of the public and the organization. I'd like to begin by saying, great job, I think, men and women, keep our streets clean. I make this village a great place to live. So I, myself, am a new resident, and I'm very proud to be part of it. While keeping underneath the 2% tax cap is a great job, I don't need to be quoted, I think more could have been done. 1.76% is still a little high, we should always try to keep it as low as we can, something to think about as we go forward for the 2021, I assume, this year. One of my major problems I had, my first look at the budget, was that it didn't look like it was much of an increase for the crossing road. Either the men and women literally put their lives in the line of, of miles, cars coming and going, protecting our children, protecting our elderly as they're crossing the street. We should do more to protect them, we should do more to provide services to them. Very concerned about the, it's not significant, 0.24% cut to the fire department. Two points that we need to increase, again, thinking of it going forward. One goal is, we should talk about, A, in the line for group, it's the volunteer service that we know, so something as getting the men and women involved in fire services, could be as simple as flyer, could be as simple as emotional vehicle day, could be as simple as, you know.
Social, if I may add, one of the, the, the increase in the fire department budget was a group.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go more. At the end of the day, men, men and women who are involved, they're, they're getting older, so we have to get, you know, men and women involved, engaged, get involved. When I grew up, I'm from, when I was, I understand the culture here, I was a cadet, so I was trained in eating tea, first aid medicine, probably at the age of 14. And then I went to the sort of the college, but I not pursue, uh, that, the fire services. Do you get open?
Joe Brady.
Yeah, Joe Brady.
Tony guy is right there.
I'm happy to have that, with that as good. Also, I'd like to see an increase for the fire department, again, going forward, for fire prevention and more fire prevention training. I think that, what's that saying, an ounce of prevention worth a pound of cure, I think my dad just said it all the time to me, that is very necessary. One of my things I do during my day job, I speak to a lot of fire, fire departments throughout, and I'm really mostly focused, obviously, you know, within that, and said, and as you talk to them, this year, 2019, we are seeing a lot of increases in fires, and some things as simple as unplugging certain outlets, some things as simple as keeping certain things away from fire, very important. Also, important to note that as we're converting a lot of houses to gas, you know, sometimes we get a place by their stove, things that we can do to help with that, a lot of fires. I think the library budget should always be a standalone budget, libraries are an essential part of our society, it should not be, it should be up for debate, actually, everything within the, within the budgets, but I think libraries are an essential part. So one of the things always, again, going forward, kind of just pull that out, and just say, you know, we're in debate, the library budget has something else, because I didn't see anything controversial over the library budget, and it's kind of like, you know, is that happening 77 pages? Could happen 60 pages? I think that that was.
It is a separate.
It's not as budgetary, sorry?
It is.
Right, it's a separate budget, but I'm saying, it's something that, you know, maybe baseline funds, just early in the year.
As a new resident, you may not be aware of this, but the library is a separate, while it's a village library, it's run by a separate volunteer library board, who are sitting there behind you, by the way. And in fact, the service, but the reality is that they determine the budget, they prepare it, and then they work with us, of course, to be a part of the village budget, but the reality is that they.
So their budget's separate from.
So they, or it's included in the budget, part of the budget, it is, it's determined separate. There's a certain amount.
What's that, trace it to the library?
I'm sure what should be going on this does not include that.
No, it does, it does include it, it is part of this budget, it is a part of this budget, however, it is determined by the separate library.
Right. So they bring, or they bring us, and they bring the, bring the term from them back, and we manage that, that question. Okay, so keep it in fair, in the transparent manner, it seems like we're probably saying the same thing, then kind of like, maybe, you know, extra steps are always good to keep, but I think, you know, the library, I think, pretty, pretty good.
Probably, probably can't, they're not a taxing agency, so they wouldn't be able raise the funds to support the library.
Correct.
That's why it's more of a.
Come to more of a.
Yeah, look, page 69, it's a, it's a contract, 1.3 million dollars, it's a transfer to that library. It'll take its taxes, the transfer of funds to the library.
Here's the three minute rule, then, to have a.
Page 69.
Yeah, I mean, so basically, we're kind of like, we're basically saying the same thing. I voted for the village tonight, I'm just saying that, you know, again, it doesn't seem like there should be anything controversial coming out of that, but.
We hope not.
So, and that's it. Other than that, Jerry, you did a great job. This is a very fair, fair budget, again. Congratulations to all, keeping below 2%. Again, but maybe next year, we can kind of keep the same budget here. Obviously, we have increases where we go, so you have to work with what you have to work with, but keeping, you know, keeping taxes low in the village is going to be essential in recent years.
Belmont disappeared.
I'm here as it is.
Thanks, thanks for everything.
You want to go sadly with this one together at the St. Paul's?
And then, Kristy Rice.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustee. I apologize for being late for work, but I felt like tonight's meeting was very important. My first budget meeting, I think, I hope it'll be my last after two hours of discussion. I'm here mostly on one article, one item, which is Belmont. Am I correct that you set aside $50,000 in our main bracket? What's the number for helping to support?
You put $50,000 in the budget, however, that doesn't mean.
$50,000. You put in one line, 100 amount, that you have to spend down from last year, so basically, you've got about $50,000 from that, plus $50,000 extra put in this year, so if you have money, you can set aside to fund, for review.
Okay, well, as you know, I can go on for the next hour, but I won't take that for too, about the traffic, safety concern, congestion, my four house rental properties, and my personal business income here. So when I took the $50,000, which isn't now incorrect, because we have $100,000, we did $50,000, we divided by 16,000 residents of the village at Coral Park, I come up with $3.20. So I Google, what could I do with $3.20, and I came up with Starbucks coffee, a GiGiorno pizza, a subway ride in New York City, a Diet Coke at 7-Eleven for a gallon of gas. So if we double that, I have two Diet Cokes later on tonight, but the bottom line is, is that, you know, my own values and the community I live in with my two young children are more important than just, you know, $100,000, we divide that among 16,000 of our wonderful residents. So I appeal to you tonight to just think about, I mean, it is such a great place, I mean, I go on and on about how blessed I am. I did not, you know, I wasn't, I didn't show up here in this village, I chose this village from Bermuda. So I did a lot of research coming here, and I will never look back on my decision, but I will keep them on, if there's any way we can squeeze any money out, because it's not just for this year, it's gonna be for the next five, 10, 20 years, for our children, our grandchildren, when this town gets overrun, and, you know, changes from my little town of Bethesda Falls to, I don't know, Jamaica, Queens, or, you know, the other areas, or the casino, when, you know, my, it's not what I want, but.
Kristy, and I, it, believe me, we were watching the activity that goes on, and the resources that we need to do, to evaluate every step of it.
And I know, and that's why I voted for each of you. Thank you.
I do not have any more slips. At this point, is there anybody else who wishes to hear?
Um, just a quick question, with regards to the rental revenue. It was $415,000 last year.
Notice this with you.
Okay. So 710, that one page said. Okay, so it was 710,000 last year, we brought in 415,000, correct, so far?
No, that's, well, it's correct, I was on that page.
Okay, so then they budgeted again for 710, so you're anticipating 300,000?
No, it's, it's budgeted, that's, we're on this year, we're on this year, the pool starts, we're generating very new June, so.
You're gonna add it to the 450.
Yeah, the money that came in before June 1st of last year, that is added to that, so look at the party years, I think, to be honest, I think the number for last year was 694. So you add, so it's plus, a little lower than 710.
Okay, 'cause I was like, we're done on the.
Yeah, it's a function of where this week.
It's half a year each.
Okay.
That's all I need.
Okay? You good? Thanks, honey. Unless anybody else has any other questions? First of all, I want to thank you again, I know Felix, because you're recording this, thank you Felix, I just have to move. But again, thank you all, and thank you again, our staff, for doing this again, and our residents for breaking this wonderful deal, so everybody has set up this, this ability as, to all of our staff, our volunteers, and all the people who are out here to make it what it is. Thank you so much. It's a great place, we, this budget will work for us for this year, and we will do everything we can to make sure that we control all the expenses, and, and look over your tax dollars like they are our own, which we do day in and day out. So, thank you all, get home safe until, okay, extend the time, so, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.